Thank you. All right, the time is 7:07 on Tuesday, January 22nd. The Board of Selectmen meeting has reconvened from executive session. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take our... I don't see him here. All right, there are no announcements. You have the minutes of January 7th. I know they were in your packet. Did everyone have enough time or is this something you'd like to table? Because they did come in later than we typically... You would like to table them? All right. Is that okay with the rest of the board? Okay, we'll table them to the next meeting. Let me step out and see if Jack is here. I heard he was in the building. I had my hand up. Now I can't see it. Somebody's still... Thank you. I'm a blind moment. Oh, I see now. Jack, our top dog contest winner is coming in with his human companion. I told him he can put the dog on his lap and come right up to... Come right up to the microphone here. He offered that dog to me. Come on!
Holy crap.
So, here is Jack. So, as you know, each year our town clerk puts a call out for residents to submit their dogs' photo, in which they hold a voting contest here at Town Hall as people enter and exit. And this is Jack's photo that was submitted. So, I have here your dog license number one. It's for Jack. His registration, his tag is one because he is the top dog of Millville. His owner, Mr. Barber.
Say thank you.
Mr. Barber and his wonderful wife Wendy. Anyone else at home?
No, just the three of us.
No cats? Jack doesn't allow cats.
Jack's a very tolerant dog.
So, this is for you, Mr. Barber.
What do you got in there?
I present this to you on behalf of the town clerk. Your dog tag is in hand, Jack's photo is back in your hands, and a certificate for the top dog.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Jack.
Well, scratch my butt, will you?
I'll pat it.
Say thanks.
So cute.
Really cute. I think last year we went from a Jack Terrier Russell, whatever they call them. I'm a cat person.
It was a Minpin.
To a Minpin?
Miniature Pinscher.
Okay. It was the smallest dog I'd ever seen to the largest dog that we've had, so...
Glad I don't have to clean his yacht. Stand lot.
All right. Our next, under Department and Boards, was the town clerk, in which I just did. I invite the library trustees. So, Colleen Kerres is going to come and give us an update on all your doings.
It's a tough act to follow, Colleen. Yeah, I know. He's so cute. Good evening, everybody. I just want to let you know that, and you probably know, that our budget was cut by 68.5% last year. So, we're kind of struggling. At the beginning of fiscal year, we cut back from four days to two days because, you know, we figured, well, we'll at least keep the library open and, you know, keep it going, at least get the patrons there. We lost Wednesday evening, which was pretty popular to a lot of the residents in town, and we also lost Saturdays. About a month into the new fiscal year, Colleen, our librarian, suggested we add Saturdays back to comply with state regulations so we could keep our certification and keep our 13 and 1/2 hours. So, we added the Saturdays back, but in doing that, Colleen lost seven hours. She, because of the losing the two days, she lost seven hours. She gave up her Saturdays and gave it to the assistants, and she only works the Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, that's a pretty tough strain when your main librarian is only working two days a week. Right now, we're using non-based savings to pay our librarian, our assistant librarian, and our cleaning person. Right now, the town has given us money for oil and electricity, nothing for books, nothing on that. We have formed a great, new great friends group that's going on. Jackie Lima is our president, and she's doing a great job. We've gotten money from that for programming for the children as well as the adults. We also have the cultural council that this year, I think we were awarded, off the top of my head, I think, seven programs for the library, so, you know, which is great. Last year, when the budgets were being presented, we had a group of children in town that were very upset, and they wanted to do something. Now, these young ladies were in third grade, and I don't know if you know them, Mrs. Dean.
I do know them.
And they wanted to do something for the library. So, one of the things they did was they set up a lemonade stand right at the end of their driveway and sold lemonade. And, you know, I thought this was, you know, pretty forward for our third graders to do this. And they also did a campaign in their classroom to raise money, and they went around to ask children in their classroom to raise money. We had also another group of children during our book sale that sold lemonade as well as bracelets. Between both groups, they raised $400, which was awesome, you know. And what we did with that money was we used it for purchasing books for the children's room. In December, we put up a giving tree just to get some basic things that we needed in the library, from a vacuum cleaner to a laminating machine to toilet paper to paper towels and anything we needed. And everything that was up on the tree was taken down, and our patrons brought them in, and we had a great supply of things now. We've enough toilet paper for a couple of years now, which is good.
That roll, that package only lasts about a month in my house, just so you know.
So, if you want to take a look at, you know, the things that are on it, we get pictures up on Facebook. On January 3rd, Colleen Anderson, the librarian, Paul Olet, and myself went to Boston to defend the library in front of the Library Board of Commissioners, and we pleaded our case. Why Paul came with us is he is a town employee as well as he was on the Finance Committee during the time of the budgeting last year. So, they were pretty, you know, forward about it, like they're saying, well, sometimes we have to, you have to bite the bullet and do the tough stuff and, you know, whatever. Probably looking at decertification, but we won't know until the beginning of February, okay? But, you know, hopefully, you know, like, which I doubt usually, you know, it's almost a 69% cut. They're looking at cuts like at 20% or, you know, their budget, so, you know, such a big cut. If we do become decertified, which we have been in the past, the library, hopefully we'll still remain open, you know, we're doing the best we can. Our collection will be available. You'll be able to take our books in our collection, but you will not be able to do interlibrary loans. Like, you couldn't come in and say, oh, I want this book by this author, we don't have it, we can get it for you. That won't happen anymore. Also, if you have a library card of Oxbridge or Blackstone or Mendon, you can go to that library, but you can't take our books, okay? Your library card is flagged because it has your address on it, and they discourage, you know, people using it. The Board told us in Boston, they don't rule them, you know, it isn't their rule to say, no, you can't have books. It's the towns themselves. Blackstone is saying, why should we pay? Our taxes paid for Millville residents to use our library, you know, that type of thing. But the only thing is, it's the most difficult part is when we get, if we get decertified, is the children, if they're doing research. And I know a lot of children do research on Internet and things, but sometimes they have to get a book or, you know, get some research, and if they have, and we don't have it, and they need to go to Blackstone, and they need to take it out, and they can't. It's, you know, and so, it's kind of hard. And I think that's the most difficult part, you know, where we don't have, we have, I mean, we have an intense collection, but we don't have enough, okay? And I want to end with, Colleen, our librarian, has given our library a phrase, the little library with the big heart. So, that's it. Any questions?
I have a question. The certification, is it because of the funding or the hours open?
It's because we're not funded. We have to be funded by the town for books, and we're not.
Okay. Is there a certain level that the town has to fund for books?
Yes.
What is that level?
We're not getting any this year at all. We're not getting any funding on books at all.
So, it's just based on 19's budget?
Yes. And it has to be 20% of your overall budget of your books have to, and it has to be funded by the town, which we're not.
Yeah, so the friends can't make up that money, give it to you, and have that count. It has to come through the town.
Yeah.
I had one quick question.
Yeah.
You mentioned that Wednesdays were usually, like, Wednesday evenings were usually more popular. Why'd you decide to open up, back up on Saturdays then?
Saturdays were pretty popular with the children, too. So, and a lot of our program, programming for children are done on Saturdays. So, instead of having to reopen on Saturdays, we kept the Saturdays open, and that also gave us the five hours, which Wednesdays will only give us two.
Okay.
You know, to make the right amount for the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Based on the funds that you have, I know you're using them sparingly, but do you have an estimate of, at current level, what that could sustain you for?
I'm looking at a year and a half. Yeah. That's if the town also gives us money at this budget, you know, the same for heating and electricity and things like that, so...
All right.
We're going down with the fight.
No doubt.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Colleen. Please thank all the trustees and the friends for their efforts.
Thank you.
All right. So, the Town Administrator Search Committee, there's a couple of members here. Do you want to come up and give an update? Mr. Hamilton or both of you can come up, or one of you or... And Jerry, I need to speak to you after the meeting on some other paperwork.
Okay.
Don't let me forget, because I will. All right. Thank you.
The search committee met on Saturday. A full committee met. The purpose of the meeting was to go over the previous assignments. We had broken the assignments down into three categories. This is on January 19th at 8:30 here at the Town Hall. Three categories. One was job description, two was a salary and qualifications, and three was the interview questions and any rubric on scoring. So, we wanted to get those. We've assigned those out to different subgroups. Those subgroups have met independently and have come back, and we were able to go over some of those things. One of the key things we came up with that day was the Town Administrator Job Description Link. We redirected to the Town Administrator Bylaws given to Diane. That was given to Diane last week. The link should be Town of Millville, Mass., Town Administrator. That's what the link will be. What was happening was, if you didn't have a link, when someone looks for the job, there was no link to get into what the bylaws were and the things that really govern, what some of the requirements were. So, we've given her that link now. My understanding is that Diane has received it and that we are going to be looking for a February 1 posting. That'll be in the Beacon, and that's the primary one in the Beacon. You go two ways. One is by print, and the other is by electronic. So, people, when they get there, will be able to see that posting. They will then be able and be directed into the Town of Millville, Mass., Town Administrator. And when they get into that link, it'll open it up so that everybody can see all the different requirements or whatever it is that the Board of Selectmen and we have come up with that is some of the requirements they have. So, with that said, we did that to begin with. The second thing we did was develop the listing of eight action items. So, we've got the action items, and the thrust on this action item was to make sure that we are still on timeframe for the 3/31 date of three to five candidates to the Board of Selectmen. So, we kind of went back to that date and then worked backwards to come up with what needs to be done when and to make sure we had all that done. At that particular meeting, we looked at, we developed a listing of eight action items, including such things as salary range review, qualifications, detailed job description, et cetera, et cetera, with assignments and deliverable dates. Some of those have been met. We've got eight different action items, and we've met four of them to this point, and we're staying on target to still deliver 3/31 to the BOS. We also discussed and voted on or had certain items held for future discussions. Such things as vetting, which is a key thing, also securing rubrics during interview process and a series of questions revealing around, and we had four different categories. That education would be one. I like to think of it more as a knockout factor for those folks to understand that vernacular. You have education, you have experience. We are looking for a five-year experienced person. Professional integrity and leadership, and we had some series of some questions that would lead into that. I think there's six questions that are specifically pronounced onto professional integrity and leadership. We also have budget and finance, and we had nine questions on that that were asked. Those questions, that'll be probing enough to be able to give us back the intellect of the person and what they have done in their prior responsibilities to tell us how they think they would react to the situation we have here in Millville. Such things in education, there's rubrics and there's point systems. For instance, if you had a master's in public administration, that would be five points, I'd say. If you had a master's in business, that'd be three points, because we believe the master's in public education has a higher pronouncement to it than does the master's in, it's just the business situation, things of that nature. We reviewed and updated the due dates to the groups. So, each group reported where they are. We had rather long discord on a number of different things, but we did vote on a number of things to go forward. We looked at the due dates to the groups, and everybody showed us that the due dates that they had were attainable, that it could be done within that timeframe. We also looked at completion dates and said, given the set of factors, are you folks able to meet this completion date, which has to be done by this time before we can start the interview? The answer to those came back as positive. We also committed to the 3/31, as I said, to submit to the BOS three to five on a short list, three to five best candidates. So, with that is the goal. We backed everything up and then started dropping dates in and then asking people what's going on with that. The discussion we had that was rather lengthy was on some of the requirements. There's a contention in the group that the business opinion of someone who has finance response and understanding, it was either that or the, you know, the idea of someone who is able to have the municipal background. Which one should take precedent? And we went around and around on that, as you remember, quite a bit on that. We still believe, and I think it was actually either motioned and voted on or tabled till the next time we met, that we believe that the professional person who has the ability on the municipal side should take some precedent, because it's different. It isn't business, even though there's very common threads between all of it. But the municipal side became, we thought, paramount. So, we still think that has a higher point total value than does the just financial and business, okay? So, that went around and around a couple of times. We also talked about vetting, which we think is important at you, and it's going to take some time to do that. We've talked about it with the police chief. He's given us his opinion on it, and I think we worked it through, where I believe Sergeant Coop is going to be the person that can handle that vetting for us so that it's not anything that we would be actively involved in. It would be handled by confidentiality, which it should be. And then it would be given to the Board of Selectmen, who would have the right to look at that and ask any additional questions, because that's your responsibility. It's not ours to figure out whether the person is good, bad, or indifferent. So, with that is pretty much the way that we've positioned it. Our next meeting is scheduled with these deliverables on those things I mentioned, on January 28th at 6:30, and that will be here. It's a Monday night, I believe it is. That's the next meeting, January 28th, 6:30, and that'll be here again at the, and open to the public for the search committee on that Monday night, 6:30. So, you've got anything that you'd like to add to this?
Part of the meeting, so I want to...
Any other questions you have on it? I think, in my opinion, it's moving along crisply. I think there was some things to truncate. We had, the first time we did it, Rich and I and the other search members at that time, we had some 11 pages of different responsibilities and credentials and all that. And the mood of the committee was that we need to truncate that down, so it might be in two pages, because no one's going to look to 11 pages. I mean, you had everything in there telling what time it is. I mean, there...
There was discussion around the job description, which we have here in, like, the books. And then we have the bylaw, which actually was voted on, and really making sure that those two are streamlined and reflective of what the position is.
Correct. Correct. It was just, when we did it the first time, we wanted to capture everything and try to make sure everybody understood what we were trying to do. I think we got an understanding of that. I think you folks do, too.
Right.
So, I think it's only fair now that we truncate that and be able to look at it in such a fashion that people can take a look and say, oh, I understand what they're looking for. And really, the crux of the questions on the integrity part of it and the professionalism and leadership really comes from how much research you did. We're not here to tell you what to go look for.
Right.
We're here to ask you, how much homework did you do and find out about this town? And that's the key. And those answers that will come back to us, regurgitated back to us, and when we have the series of questions, we have, which are six on that, will be able to dictate to us whether the person did their homework or not. And I think that's going to take some knockout factors, move some people out that just, you know, why would a chance to look at it or whatever the excuse might be for that period? So, those are the type of things. We're trying to hone that down to a focus point where we can really get the best out of the individual and ask them to tell us how they would react to the situations we have here in Millville and how much research they did to make sure that they were that interested in it. I think that pretty much sums it up.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
Jerry, do you have a time? You said you have a timeframe for everything.
Yep.
Can you share that with us?
Yep.
Okay.
I can, I've got a copy out here.
Okay.
It will be, I'll ask the chairman, because of the meeting last Saturday.
Right.
What we had was the one we brought to the meeting.
Right.
And she needs to, with Paul, Aubrey was sick, so Paul was taking the notes. They need to update that. I'll ask her just to give you that.
Yeah.
As opposed to me giving you the one we already did before we got to the meeting.
Right, right, right.
Okay. But it does have all the timelines and comments and dates and all that stuff.
I'd just like to have that.
Yep. I will indeed make sure if you'd like, I'll send it to the chairman, and she can distribute it around. Is that fair?
Yep.
Anybody who would like a copy of it can have it from there, okay?
And just so the board knows that the advertisement was due to the Beacon or MMA. On the 17th was the due date. So, on the 16th, it was uploaded. It was given to the MMA. And unbeknownst to us, they actually go live with the web version right away. Last time, it was only a few days prior to the print.
Yeah, you're right.
But we caught just a small, like, an auto correct, it put a period at the end of our link.
Okay.
So, when you clicked on, like, when I was doing it through Indeed, I couldn't get to the link, like, it wasn't, it wasn't live, and I caught the little period. So, we called MMA and said, can you please fix this little typo so that everything's good? And the response back was, okay, you're all set. It's on the website and it links. And I was like, it's on the website. So, it actually, it actually went live when you posted up, like, they must hit an approve button. So, it is live on MMA and it is live on Indeed. It will be live the beginning of February on ZipRecruiter for about three weeks before the month free membership of $250 runs out. So, that will go. But there is, there is, it is out there, so individuals may have already seen it or know about it.
And did we already have clarification in the Town Hall what should be done to resumes that are sent in? We already got that handled?
Yep, that was on...
Yeah, that was the last time we made sure that that came to Diane. They had to be sequestered.
Right.
And they would be picked up by someone that the chairman either designates or herself picks up to make sure, and then they open all at one time.
Right.
So, there's no advance notification to everybody running around in circles trying to look at things.
Yep. So, let me just make sure. The new Town, so I spoke to Sherri about that.
She distributes the mail or...
Yeah, typically. And then it goes to Diane.
Right.
Diane, Sherri, and I manage this small task manager list of all the things going on. And so, I'll put notes in there and highlight it, and so they'll see it and they'll, you know, kind of let me know that they've seen it. But they are aware that it's going to come in to, Diane, she's to hold them, she's not to open them, and then she's to give them to the search committee.
Okay, very good.
And we'll take it from there and walk it through the vetting process and then start to, start to take a look at them and start to... We had 17 the last time, and we knocked it down to 12 pretty quickly. There were some that just didn't, didn't make the grade. Then from the 12, we knocked it down from there with knockout factors on specific things. We knocked it down to six. And then from that six, we ended up coming up with three. And with those three, those are the three that were presented to the Board of Selectmen, who then made their selection.
With the committee, search committee, are you planning on doing one round or two rounds? How many rounds of interviews before you send them over to BOS?
One.
Okay.
Yeah, we're screening.
Right, okay.
And we've got, we think that, and we talked about that, should we do it a couple of times? We talked about it, but given the quick timeframe and given the, I'm flattered, the group, given the intelligence the group we've got, if someone can put it by 10 of us, that'd be pretty unusual.
How were you setting up in your first round interviews?
What we, what we did the last time, and I've recommended this time, it's, again, it's up to the chairman, she wants to do it. What we did last time was we had an hour, and we had two per night.
With the whole committee interviewing?
Whole committee.
Okay.
Yep. And we all had different questions we picked, either ones that I had a specific interest in or one that gee whiz, I'll take it because, you know, it's available. And then we'll take those questions and we'll work those down. In some cases, frankly, we had some people that within 20 minutes, we were, thanks very much, see you later. You know what I mean? You look good on the resume, but boy, you don't look that good in person. So, that happened fairly quick. But we think two a night's the best you can do.
Yeah.
So, we're going to need, you know, probably a series of three or four of those to call it down to the point of three to five to be able to give back to you folks as to the best candidates we can come up with.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. So, the highway surveyor is next door. Did he go into planning board? So, I'm going to just hold off. I asked him if he would be able to sneak out, but we'll bother him towards the end of the meeting, because Oz could go longer, may not go longer, but I don't want to interrupt their work either. So, the next item is the MMA Business Meeting RSVP, if anyone's going to go. You should have already sent that in. If you are interested in going, we can have Sherri follow up and just make sure that you're on the list if that's something you wish to do.
It was Saturday.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
No, the due date was Saturday, wasn't it? Formed by the 11th? Oh, yeah. Almost came in after our last meeting and, yeah, the 4th it was delivered.
I guess we're not going. I couldn't make it anyway.
Right? All right. Apologize for that. So, the recap of the joint BMR meeting, so that the residents know, we met on Wednesday evening with the high school. I don't know if anyone here wants to jump in about their thoughts or feelings, but they presented, I shouldn't say a budget.
They told us what they're doing, what their plan is, how they've got to this point. So they have a level funded line column, a level service, and a zero base, based on their needs. So their timeframe, someone corrects me if I'm wrong, was, we meet with them on the 6th and their public hearing is on the 13th. So we really won't get a final number till the 13th, at which time it's still open for adjustments.
That's March, right?
Yes, March. So maybe I'll ask Tim to afterwards take this, but their budget workshops, they'll be talking about the Millville Elementary School on January 23rd at 6:00 p.m. They will be speaking about the middle and high schools on January 30th at 5:00 p.m. On February 5th at 6:00 p.m., they'll be talking about special education, athletics, and music. On February 27th at 6 o'clock, they'll be meeting with technology, teaching and learning, and all other district costs. All those meetings will be held at the Hartnett Middle School.
And if I remember correctly, the two sets of numbers that they put forth were increase of about 3% and the other one was just over 11% as obviously, just throwing numbers out there for first round.
Three at level service and 11 at zero base.
Increase over last year.
Their E and D stands at $636,234. That was in an email that I received in December. And, or we received.
Those percentages do not reflect any contractual negotiations with their Unit C members.
Right, so that's their custodians, their aides, their secretaries.
And their cafeteria staff, I believe.
Unit A.
Unit C is in their third year of their-.
But Unit A is their teaching staff.
Which will be even more significant.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're just coming out of their 333.
So there is, there is a group of individuals who they are working with.
And they included no numbers, so that percentage, that 3 to 11% does not reflect any increase to teachers.
No, because they're in their contract, well, it's-
No, they're negotiating that contract.
No, no, the teachers, they just, they're up next year.
I don't think so.
I think Unit C- Although next year, the teachers are up this year.
Correct.
I don't believe so, I'll double check. So-
So it could be larger, that's all.
Yeah, they're, I'm just making sure my notes.
I shouldn't clean up my folder today.
And I think that's it, I don't think I have anything else.
And that, that whole video is online if anybody wants to see the entire-
Meeting, yep, good point. And Tom got us out of there in a timely fashion.
I didn't even have a need to.
I know, all right. In your packets is a warrant schedule for the annual town meeting that will be held on May 13th. We took this schedule from last year's. So at the next meeting, an agenda item will be there to open the warrant. This is a guideline at this point, but I'd like to vote on the schedule. So if you can just go back, there was a couple things I wasn't sure if we want to leave in. Or if we want to, you know, obviously, there's a meeting date set for Fincom, BOS, and Moderator to review. It's not to say that has to happen on the 4th, I think that we have to talk to those people. There's also, you know, the, oh, there was in here the Fincom meeting, which I think was removed so that they could set their own date. So at the next meeting, we'll be opening the warrant and then we'll be approving the warrant schedule. We'll approve the warrant schedule and open the warrant at the next meeting.
Did anybody check these dates to make sure that they're timely for postings and such?
So it follows the exact same schedule as yet, last year.
And that was okay last year with all?
Yes, yep, two weeks out. And a warrant can be opened, you can open it, put an article on, and close it within five minutes and it's a special town meeting warrant. So, so we followed last year's, and I had sent this to Diane and Sherri and said, do a double check to make sure it is all in compliance, so.
And none of the dates had any holidays?
I don't believe so, I even think the Tuesday of April was taken into consideration. Yep, that's, the 16th is a Tuesday.
When does Easter?
There's nothing, the February doesn't. Yep. So it was all taken into consideration. So at the next meeting, we'll have that article to approve and then to open. Okay, if there's anything on there that stands out, we can adjust and change for the next meeting. I think the only thing I did take out from last year, it had the public hearing date, which they have to, I don't feel like, yeah, it's Fincom's, it's Fincom's meeting and they might opt to have it, it's at least seven days a week before, so I figured they'll, they'll post it as needed. Not gonna tell Fincom when their meeting. And I also want to get with Fincom and the moderator, Fincom and Board of Selectmen, because we won't know, moderator, to make sure that that April 4th, that it's, that's a regular board meeting after election. So I'm not sure if that's the best time to do the warrant, but we definitely need to talk about that, so, starting to think about. All right, everyone good on that? All right, so the Memorial Day Observation Committee, Observance Committee. Last year, our very dedicated Memorial Day Parade Committee, who had been working at it for over a decade, had decided that they have done enough and they were ready to pass the torch. They did not get reappointed to that committee, we did not do anything with that committee with the New Year opening. I didn't know if it's the privilege of this board to create that position, create that committee. So that if they wanted to do a parade, they could, if they want to do a service in the park, they could. If they wanted to do anything else they thought of, they could do that. I personally feel something to observe Memorial Day is appropriate. I don't know if we're looking at, you know, five people or seven people or, like the Parade Committee, it was kind of open to whoever wanted to serve and help and plan. So it's really the pleasure of this board, if we want to establish one, put it out there and get some names and see.
So right now, we have a Memorial Day Observance-
We have nothing right now.
I thought there was, nobody was reappointed to it.
To the Parade Committee?
All right, so, to the Parade Committee, but I thought this was a different committee, the Observance.
No, it hasn't been established.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking to establish-
And it can be any-
A Memorial Day Observance Committee, that's all.
And then that way, they can kind of do whatever, whatever they see fit.
So I make a motion that we create or solicit members for a Memorial Day Observance Committee as soon as possible.
A second. Any other discussion about that?
I have one, so most likely, the members won't be getting any compensation for their time. But what about the, if they plan a parade or anything?
There are no funds to support that either at this time.
That's what I was wondering, like-
I don't think there was a line item. There was a line item on like $500, but that-
Cut, or?
I believe that was cut in the budget. But if it's there, then it's theirs to use, and if it's not, then alternative-
It's a lemonade.
Will have to be, and they made $400.
Observance in the park is pretty low budget, but I would love to see something done.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Yeah, they would work within, if there's a line item with that number, I mean, you can pull it up quick, but then they use that. But if it's zero, then they may have to get creative. All right, any other discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nays? Do you have this, okay, it's not on the agenda. It's more of an announcement? That, I'll read it, it's not, it's, the 2019 Annual Town Election Calendar is now available. And that goes from obtaining nominations, papers, submitting them with, you know, if you wish to withdraw, the last day to register to vote, last day for absentees, and the, leading up to the April 1st town election. And what is required to do, so I'm sure the town clerk has probably had this posted on the front.
There's also a mailing on there.
And there's a mailing too, okay. So that is out to the general public for all of the positions that are open. So the-
Came with the census.
Did it?
It's a green form.
So the next item is the ACO, so the Department of Agriculture and Resource, Department of Agricultural Resources. It's a yearly thing in order to file with them on who's in charge in your town for the animals. So you'll see on page two, we removed the former animal control officer, and it was updated with the current, with Kevin's name in it. The supervisor was removed and made to the Board of Selectmen. And that's all reflective on the second page too. So what we're looking to have this board do is give me the authority to sign the paperwork to send back to the Department of Agricultural Resources to have on file our most current information for our ACO.
Under the supervisor, the title, is this the actual copy that's going out to?
Yes.
So do we need to change that administrator to?
Selectman.
Mm-hmm.
So we can change that?
Yep, I think the second page is, that you have.
It says Town Administrator Officer.
Yeah, okay.
So that needs to be struck.
Yep, I'll make sure that's struck when we-
And in the first sentence of this, it says maybe a policeman or a constable. Does that mean they may be or should be or have to be? And does Kevin need to be appointed as a constable to hold this duty? Or can he be appointed as ACO and that's that?
I think it's just the ACO, I think in lieu of, if you didn't have an ACO, then you would do the others.
Police officer, constable, okay. I make a motion that we forward this communication-
No, allow me to sign.
Allowing our illustrious chairwoman to sign this paperwork and send it back to the Department of Agricultural Resources.
Can you do that, I see designation and appointment, so can you do the appointment of Kevin Sullivan and the Board of Selectmen?
You want me to include that?
Yes, if you could.
And with that, we would also like to appoint Kevin Sullivan and the Millville Board of Selectmen as his supervisor.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion? Comments, concerns? I think so, if you're all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that vote is unanimous. All right, so Town Planner. So the Planning Board met last week, they've sent us a letter that they would like to advertise this position for eight to 10 hours. So we are going to move forward with posting this. It was talked about that the Worcester Telegram would probably be the best place to post for this to find a planner. So we'll just have to do some legwork on that and funding posting, previous postings, and then get that out. Any thoughts?
Were you reaching out to, I can't remember?
CMRPC, yep.
Did you, for the town planning?
So-
Were you reaching out to them regarding that?
Yeah, we gave the agreement and the fee schedule to them. And at their meeting, they opted-
To do this instead.
To do it this way.
Oh, okay.
I think because some of the issues that, my interpretation, is that some of the issues that are pressing and the marijuana licenses going through, that having someone in-house, someone to follow through, someone, you know, to be on top of those things rather than someone coming in, you know, here and there when asked, you know, per diem. They felt, they felt better about it this way, and so that was the vote of their committee.
Okay, so you mentioned you're gonna pull up the previous job description.
Yep.
Should we look at that or have somebody look at that because of the, specifically the marijuana? I mean, obviously, we need somebody that really knows the laws and bylaws for these new businesses we're bringing into town. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, obviously, I haven't seen the job description, but just to make sure that it's covered in there.
Who do you think running that, KP?
I mean, we can look at it first to see what it is before we-
All right, I will.
I just think it's important that we look at it because the dynamics of the town have changed since we posted it last.
Yep, that's true. Okay, no, I've got it there and I'll pull that up and we'll look at that. It is though, the Planning Board is an elected board and it is at their discretion, so I'll work with them and talking with them about how to proceed forward, just to make sure we cover all our bases.
The recommendations.
Yes, all right.
And the other thing is, are they only planning on posting the job description on, in that newspaper? Or are they going to post it elsewhere?
I'm not sure, I think in the past, and this is what I was told, that it ran in the Worcester Telegram, but that doesn't mean it can't be explored for other locations.
I was just thinking, the place, I forget the name of it, that way, or we just post it for the TA position, maybe?
Indeed.
No, no, no.
Oh, the MMA, the Beacon.
Maybe that would be a good place to post it as well.
All right. I'll follow up with the Planning Board on that. Financial policy update, that's me, I was to separate and send you all copies. I got tied up with some other things and it landed at the bottom of my list, but I will do it this week. I think we've just had a lot on our plates coming back from the holiday, and we've had some other more serious pressing issues, so we'll, we'll keep that on there so that we don't forget about it and we'll go back to those. Interim Town Administrator, so we received a letter and I received some names. I sent for some of the names that were recommended from area town administrators. I sent contacts out asking them for if they were interested, you know, their timeframe, their, what they're looking at. I figured once we get all of those back in, then we can look at, you know, what's out there, who's available. And then as a board, we'll sit down with that and we'll just go over it.
Did you fill my deadline?
One was like on a phone, I don't, I think I just said soon, you know what I mean, it was after our last meeting. And I was hoping that we'd get one or two from another administrator, but I wasn't able to get that. I don't think I wrote it in the email, but I will send a follow-up. I did get one back, but there was another that we spoke on the phone and seemed interested, so I'll touch base again with the others too. There wasn't many, I think there was four, rates, time available, experience, just, you know, the, a cover letter of sorts.
I just may add a couple of things, please. For me, this is getting to be something we need to really get done because my list of things to do keeps growing and growing and growing. And the time allotted in a day, I mean, all of us are seeing it. It's- It's just not, I, I'm having a difficult, difficult time getting everything done. Um, I don't know, I'm not, I don't wanna speak for anybody else on this board, but, um, we all have a lot going on, so, for me, the sooner the better.
So I, so, Joe knows better than anyone. Um, I think Joe was bearing a lot of that, that brunt prior to stepping down from chair. And, you know, as I got on, my biggest fear was that we're gonna miss something, that something was gonna fall through the cracks, that there's gonna be an important piece of something we really need and we're gonna lose it because we don't have someone managing day to day. Really just investing time, like going through the emails, assigning who's gonna be responsible, following up, does take a lot of time, does take, and as I said, um, two, three, four, and I've probably added now. So this is just things that are going on. And I know there's three more emails I have to add to this that are important and, you know, and, and who's responsible and who's doing what and trying to reach out to other departments to give us assistance in various areas to follow up to. So it is, it is a lot to handle. Um, and I agree, we need someone sooner. We needed them probably in October, to be quite honest.
Exactly.
So, um, yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Oh, all right. The fobs are still in here, not sure why, but we are gonna tackle that.
But I do notice that's, all of the duplicates seem to have been removed, so.
So, yes, there was an email sent out. And anyone with duplicates, it was cleared up. Some people, their first one didn't work, so they were given a second one, but returned the first one. So we, um, we cleared that up. Um, that is the list. So the question would be is, how do we deal with, do we want to, you know, um, give access certain hours with the key code so that they can come in and out? Or do we wanna continue with people with key, with the security code to open and close the building?
Other issues now?
Um, there was one issue with the cultural council. There was an issue the other night with, I was taking an online class, I couldn't leave the computer. Fingcom.
Fingcom doesn't have?
I would've been missed out of that video chat. Fingcom.
Fingcom doesn't have, not even the chair?
No. So is that something we wanna like talk about, like having Fingcom Chair have the code?
I think it's important. They're gonna be moving a lot.
They're called to close up.
Right.
Yeah, but they're gonna be meeting a lot in the next couple of months with, um, budget season. I think that at least the Chair should have access to the building, in my opinion.
And I don't see her name on here, but I really thought she had one.
I didn't see it either.
All right, so do we wanna do Fingcom? With the code? And a fob? If she doesn't have one?
I think you need the code to get in, right?
Yeah.
I don't have the code, but...
So same code going in and going out. The, the building has security cameras.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so, you know, it is what it is. Actually, you don't need a fob to leave. Do you mean you need the code?
Yeah, right.
To shut the building, to lock it, secure it. So, okay, so Fingcom? And then we'll leave it as that right now? Yeah, okay. I think things got a little messed up here. Hold on. Budget calendar. Okay, budget calendar is not in there. It's a discussion piece. So I sat with, um, Mrs. Bono after the BMR meeting last Wednesday. Um, she and I are, um, setting up and creating and conversing, commenting through a Google Doc, setting things. I did it the other day. I noticed she, um, was in there today, made some changes and comments. I didn't have a chance today to go in. But basically, we're looking at our off week of meeting. I didn't think you wanted to come here Monday for this meeting and Tuesday for Fingcom. So I made it on our off week. Is that okay with everyone? What is? So it'll be the Tuesday. So it'll be, um, January 29th, February 12th, February 26th, March 12th, March 26th. It will be Fingcom and Board of Selectmen. The, um, we'll invite committees in, um, to give them time to discuss what their budget is, what their requests are. It will allow both Fingcom and Board of Selectmen to hear all the information at the same time. Um, the first one was library. She doesn't know it yet. I haven't sent the invite yet. Um, library, COA, clerk and treasurer collector? Because those were the, um, first ones that we got in.
Are you gonna be sending this in an email with the dates?
Yeah, so it's a Google Doc right now, but then I can, I can share it out.
Right.
We just wanna clarify, the police chief has confirmed his time on the 12th. Um, we're talking about how to schedule like those smaller budgets and, I'm doing that. So between Aubrey and myself, we'll schedule all of the departments, departments with over $10,000 definitely are on our radar. Smaller departments might have a walk-in night where they can come down any time between these times and sit down if they wanna explain their budget or praise or beg, whatever they need to do. Um, so we'll do that. So, but those are our meeting dates. The 29th of January? We're gonna send out emails tonight that was on my list. Let me go into the document. Um, we scheduled each individual, um, department for a half hour to give you plenty of time to, um, discuss. Let me just pull it open. It's right here. I think it's right here. Yep, here it is, BOs Fingcom. I think, uh, we had you for 6:30? Received your budget. Yeah, no, yeah, so, so we have columns going, okay. Um, yeah, you're at 6:30. So does that work? I can put you in right now? Okay, all right. So I think we did it based on pretty much like, as the budgets were rolling in, we just started plugging them in new and some that would come in later. So actually Aubrey did quite a amount of work on this, on what she, she puts them out, so. That's good. I'll review that when I get home. But, so we're working on that document. We'll get it over to you. I'll share it with these. And so those will be the meetings. And I think we said pretty much like starting at 6:30 and going two hours, like not inundating ourselves and being here until 11 o'clock at night, which Fingcoms have done in the past. But, you know, kinda keeping a time condensed and focused. So, um, that is the, the budget season as it begins. If you have any input, thoughts, changes, just let me know. Um, I will, um, I'll give you all viewing rights on that, but not editing rights because then it, it really is a... Actually, I'll just download and send you what it is and I'll send you updates as it goes along. I think that's better. Because if you're viewing what we're changing, it's gonna get murky. Because you can all be on there at the same time and be seeing what's going on. It's a work, a working document, so. I'll download it and send it to you with a, um, updated date next to it each time. Is that okay?
That works.
Does that work? Okay. All right. So I thank Aubrey for doing a little more legwork on that. So that's the budget calendar as we know it. I'll get that to you tonight. As always, we are still in need of two Board of Assessors. This is an online course that is needed. And it is the, one of the most vital boards in our community for assessing and creating, and, um, revenues. So, I'd like to see two people step up for that. Town hall, security, we talked about. I had a, okay, the remote monitoring, we're good with. The fobs, we're good with. Parking lot lighting, I received a complaint from an individual who lives behind. I looked at it along with the chief, gave our rec, you know, gave our opinion of it. Um, they have asked for a further meeting to talk about it because they say it is shining into their home and they wanna have a conversation about it. So, um, I don't know if any board member here wants to sit with them or if I'll sit with them with the police chief or go to their home or whatever. Um, just to talk about the parking lot lighting and how it's affecting their view at their home. So just so you know that that, um...
Which, which one, is it the one to the extreme, right, or?
Uh, the Belanger's house? Mm-hmm. So they emailed once, we responded, but they would like to sit down and talk, so that will be a conversation we'll have with them. Um, the annual town report is February 8th, 2019 for all departments. Andrew, at the, in, in passing with you, I had asked if you were interested in writing that. Is that something you'd like to do?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think I could do that.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the board who would like to take on that responsibility?
Let's do the eighth.
Yep.
I have time between now and then to do that.
Joe has his old templates.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Did you think we forgot about you over there?
You have the template. You got everything.
It's your last one. You can do it.
Yes, um, I appreciate that, Joe. Um, and one of the reasons why, um, I, I obviously have a lot going on, um, but on February vacation, I'm gonna come in and we're gonna format that and we're gonna get it ready. And hopefully Tom's on vacation.
I am.
And maybe one day we can sit and kinda make sure it all looks good and piece it together. Um, this year, um, the, the budget line item for binding that was reduced. So I think what we'll need to talk about is releasing it via electronic copies and then maybe doing requests for paper copies.
That makes sense.
So, you know, it's, it's easy enough if someone calling and saying, put my name on the list or, um, a Google form or just, you know, um, but I just don't, I don't know who's gonna make them. Because at that meeting, people volunteered.
I vote Aubrey.
She, I wasn't gonna say her name, but...
I just said it.
She did say I'd even help. So, you know, maybe we'll have a Saturday annual town report making, binding, um, that, the book. So, we'll have to discuss that. So maybe we'll set something up so people who want a paper copy have a few on hand for those people who kinda randomly walk in, but for the most part, electronic copy with a few paper copies.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. In your package, just so you know, there is an ethics, um, update. Um, the top name on the list has turned theirs in. So each year, the residents, uh, the residents, the individuals who work on committees are sent a letter if they need to take the test or not take the test, if they're up to date. Um, so that's who we're missing. So if you know any of those individuals, please reach out to them and ask them to take the online test. And, um, so that we can have that taken care of, because it is, um, an ethics violation if you haven't taken it since your appointment or your election date. And that has to be done every two years. So, that was from the town clerk. All right. Administrative update. So, um, Selectmen Alward?
So we have begun negotiations with the police chief to re-up his contract. That just began.
Okay. All right, thank you. Erica Blake, on your things that you're working on?
So town administrator's search committee, I went to a meeting about a week and a half ago. They seem to be very much on track of what they need to do. They're splitting out into small groups. Uh, I think Jerry gave us a very, um,
Yeah.
detailed update of what they're doing, but I think they're doing a great job, so thank you guys for that. Um, Jen, I think you went to the last meeting. I don't know if there's anything you needed to add.
Um, no, I think Jerry captured that meeting very well. I was present. I was able to do some of my selectmen work while you guys were conversing, so it was a nice time to, to, to kinda hear and kinda work at the same time. But no, I think they're, they're in a good spot. Mrs. Gill and I, um, just by virtue of me posting things, have been in contact about the, the job posting and things of that. So I think everyone's, everyone's right where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, I think that's going very well. Um, BBT flyer, I said I'd have a, a sample of that mid-February.
The, the pay scale in, let me see if it's on the back counter for you.
Okay.
The postage?
Okay, yeah, so I'll bring it, uh, mid-February, we'll talk about that. Um, and regarding the payroll audit, um, that was done. Um, Legal is discussing some options right now, what we're going to do with that bucket of money. That was, that was brought up in the audit.
Okay.
So, that's all we got.
Selectmen Hull, anything on those items that need updating?
No, again, I just wanna thank the Chairperson of the Search Committee and Mr. Finn for speaking on that tonight. Uh, personnel and policy update, there's a lot of work to be done there. Uh, we're gonna, the copy I have is, uh, our last copy of our personnel, full, or material and it's, it's old. And we, what I need to do now is go into the bylaws and see what's what with that and it's gonna definitely take a little bit.
Right. I think, I think almost that personnel policy is kind of one of those things that are gonna need a lot of eyes and a lot of time.
It really is. It's not, it, we'll see what I end up with.
I don't think, I don't think, I mean, you're not working on updating it, you're just looking at
No.
how do we proceed?
Right.
Okay.
Because it is gonna take a lot of time.
I don't want you to think you're doing.
Who created or slashed, updated it last? I know it's like 2009.
2009.
Right, but who, who did it? Was it the executive secretary at the time? I'm sure it was, I'm guessing that it was probably the executive secretary, probably gave a section each week or two to the selectmen to update, make changes, and then go forward.
That sound familiar?
That's usually how it's done.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
Just to the point on, on policies and rewriting them, on capital improvement planning. It's easy to copy and change the town name on the exemplar that we have. But the, the issue here is that you're gonna dig another step further into the policies. Okay, right now on the planning board, we have one person. So we have, we have a number of vacancies, but the strong position in capital planning is the town administrator. And we have to look, I have to do some more research. I'll ask you at another time.
Sure.
To get all of that information so that it all coincides. It's about an hour's work just to copy of, but you, you need to ensure that the policy, there's policy there to support it.
All right. Um, marijuana update?
Marijuana update, uh, I guess the issue right now is, uh, town planner.
Yeah, so, um, Ezra from Garden Wonders. All right, so, let me just look at my note. Ezra has turned in to the planning board their plans. Um, there was a small problem with the engineer. He had an architect draw up the plans and you're supposed to have a mass certified engineer. Um, he was informed of that. Um, he emailed last week. He is being put on the planning board agenda for the 28th for a hearing. And he said by then he will have the site plans with the stamp from the mass certified. Um, so he's on task. The host agreement, we're kinda still making sure we have the most updated one to get to Brian Riley. I had one, Riley had another. Um, I reached out to Mino to find out what was the last one they have on file. Um, so we're, we're getting the host agreement. Um, so that will be, that will have the most recent copy. KP will have the most recent copy and give us the feedback.
You only sign one copy though, right?
I don't know, do we get more money if we sign more than one? No, I'm just, we just wanna make sure we have the most current, because there was a couple different, there was two different ones floating around without a date of revision on them.
Whatever has the bigger number for deposit.
Well, that's what I, that's what I want, I would like.
Yeah.
But, um, they are on the, or should be on the planning board agenda for the 28th, because they submitted all of their... because they submitted all of their, the, the stacko information. You probably got yours. So, myself, the warrants were signed. January tenth warrant was signed for thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the warrant for January seventeenth was signed in the amount of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. So, that was done. The park grant, um, I reached out to the chief, he served on the centennial committee. As many of you know, since our last meeting, it was announced in the newspaper that the town received about fifty-one thousand dollars in that park grant. In reviewing the grant and talking with the trustees of the soldiers, um, it's not soldiers park. Trustees of the Veterans Park, I confuse, it's the old name and new name put together. The Veterans Park trustees, um, I had a quick conversation with them and we're gonna, we're gonna set up a meeting to talk about using, using the grant money for the intended purpose, but looking at it a little differently than what was proposed. I did reach out to the chief, he was on the centennial. He has Trish, who is the, his grant person. And I thought it would be a good fit as we're sharing responsibilities to have people with expert eyes work on their expertise. So, chief, along with Trish, have been in touch with the, the individuals at the state level to see how we can revamp that to be reflective for what the purpose was, keep the integrity of the project and meet the needs of the centennial committee and the Veterans Park. So, that's a work in progress. There is a mandatory meeting this week or next week and I'm going to talk to the chief about who we're going to send to that meeting, whether it's myself or, or someone at town hall. But it is mandatory and we have to make sure that we're there. So, um, we'll follow up on that. So, that's where the park, um, grant is. It was submitted because there is some centennial money being used. So, it kind of was dubbed Centennial Park, but I don't want anyone to be confused. We're not getting a new park and we're not renaming any park. And that's one of the tweaks that will need to be made to the, the grant. We reviewed the town planner earlier through their email and Andrew talked about the police chief's contract that we started meeting with him. So, let me make sure there isn't anything else.
Thought I heard Brian's voice out there.
Oh, yeah, we should probably see if he's available because we're at the end of our meeting.
I just, kudos, or kudos rather, to you for keeping up with that grant, Adam Chilwell. Thank you, Chief Landry. That could have fallen through the cracks.
It almost did.
You know, thanks to the commitment of a few key people, we're going to be able to make those updates, so thank you.
Diane did some great legwork with the Melissa from the state level, making sure, because we were at the December thirty-first and with the holidays and vacations, it was, um, and they were very, the state was very accommodating in working with us to maintain that.
That's great to hear too.
Yes. Oh, okay, if Brian comes in, then that's done. I am just starting a.
A few minutes.
A placeholder, that's fine, a placeholder for the annual town meeting, topics of discussion, if anyone has any. Just kind of keep them wherever you keep your list so that we can have some discussion about some plans for the town or items that may need to be discussed for annual town meeting. All right.
As we get deeper into the budget and meeting with our groups, we might, uh, be better.
And there's also, you know, some projects that were going on that were being taken care of, but now we need to really think about how we're going to address some issues. All right. The next item is selectmen forum. So, for some reason, I printed out two of Kingston's and I didn't print out, um, Andover's. So, I'm going to have to send that to you. As I started looking and creating, um, what a public forum would look like, every town I went to, every, um, individuals that I was looking at, some has them online, some don't, some have it, it's just.
Kind of willy-nilly?
I will send over Andover's, um, but I have two here this evening. Kingston, Mass. and Northbridge School Committee. And the reason I thought of it is because I knew Northbridge had a policy because I've seen their policy. So, when I started digging deeper, I found Kingston and I found Andover's policy. What I'd like to do is, I can send you all three of these electronically, I'll just have to scan them because they're sometimes within a bigger policy book. You know, I mean, they're fifty pages, but I'm printing page nineteen and twenty. So, I can send it and what we can do is maybe have a conversation about what we like and what we don't like about them, what might be good policy for our town, what will work here. And on each one of these, there was always an adopted by the board dates on them. So, I don't think that this is within just me saying this is how I'm going to do it. I think as a board, we should adopt a policy on how we're going to conduct public forum. I've also, um, in my original email to KP Law, I asked if they had some samples. So, what the email we discussed earlier this evening had two items that were returned from our labor people. The other email had three other items that I asked about and this was one of them. It was asked about, um, do they, do they have any on file with them that they currently, you know, could kind of give us? So, I'll await for them, but I just want you to know that the ball, the ball is rolling. I started kind of drafting from it and then I was like, oh, there's a adopted by, and I'm like, nope, I'm not doing this by myself, we'll all do it together. So, um, if there's something you like or don't like or wording, we'll, we'll kind of work on that. So, your input would be great and then we can have that up and going within the next month, hopefully. All right. Um, we're not going to sign our minutes. Mr. Mullally is walking in right, right on time.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, coming right up. So, um, we had highway surveyor earlier this evening under department and boards and we held you off for later, knowing that your meeting would probably end before ours.
Almost not.
Huh?
Almost not.
Almost not, I know, well.
I was supposed to be here at your last meeting, just to give you an update, but prior to coming here, you're called out by the police for the roads being icy from all the water runoff. So, I was unable to make it. With that being said, I wanted to give an update on snow and ice through December thirty-first of where we stood, even though we didn't have or haven't had a lot of snow this year. We've still been out quite a bit with the rain, then the cold temperatures, water table. Like I just said, um, we have some areas in town where it's just running across the streets and it's constant retreat, retreat. But, um, some numbers we had, we had the contracted services that we used was, um, ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. One of the big things I've always stressed of our expenses in that number, four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven of that is just a front-end loader, um, to be used. A front-end loader is used to load trucks for sand and salt. A front-end loader is used to bring the sand and salt into the shed, mix it. Sounds a little crazy, you bring it in, you take it out. Trucks can't just dump in the shed, it's not big enough. To this date, uh, because of the winter we were having, I still hadn't filled the shed. I only brought it to a little bit under half-capacity, which kept this number down because in the material end of it, we had only spent eight thousand, twelve dollars as of the thirty-first of December. The town.
Just stop here for a minute. Eight, uh, eight thousand dollars, um, that was all for the budget, for this year's budget. Was any of that bought in the prior year budget?
No, this is all within this fiscal year, snow and ice.
Okay.
So, this total number that I have for you, the total number for, through December thirty-first was nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars that we had spent on snow and ice. But within that number also, using the town trucks, the town labor, the town fuel, the town trucks are costing us about thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per hour to operate. That's accounting the repairs that we, the minor repairs we have to do to keep everything, uh, running on the snow equipment, the labor that we put into our employees, if you're a part-time or the one full-time guy we have. That being said, using a contracted rate at a hundred and ten dollars an hour versus the thirty-two, you have about a net savings of about twenty-nine hundred dollars because that would have cost about forty-two hundred dollars. So, this is, like I said, through December thirty-first. Up until Saturday night, we were still doing very well. Then around nine o'clock Saturday night, everything changed. Up until about three-thirty this afternoon, we were still, still at it. We were out for about twenty-seven hours on the first stint, home for about four, back out for another twelve, home for a few. And then they were back out at five o'clock this morning until three-thirty this afternoon. Again, that's contracted equipment, the town's equipment. Front-end loader had to go out because, as we all know, everything froze up and things had to be moved and the only way you're going to move it was a front-end loader.
How many contractors did you have on the road?
Um, at the peak of the storm, we had eleven, uh, pieces of equipment on the road. Two of those being town-owned. Different times, different hours. Some, some vehicles had anywhere from nine hours, some went through the whole thing, the first stint of the twenty-seven. No one, no one went home. We, being at half-capacity of the shed, um, I don't want to say we were caught off guard, but last Friday, I decided to have Kimball bring, bring us three trailer loads of sand, which I'm very grateful that I did because we depleted the entire shed of what we had. We were down to maybe a small dump truck load left. I called our salt supplier, within three hours, they had me three trailers, um, down there. So, now, um, at that point, I ordered fifteen. So, between, uh, what I'm going to bring the shed back to probably, uh, at least half, if not, uh, two-thirds full in the contracted equipment and the town's expense for what it just cost us, this ice storm that, snow storm of six inches and the ice storm that we just had cost you more than the whole month of November and December, um, by far.
That's up quick.
It goes fast. Uh, with that being said, also, um, the town residents, um, a lot of town residents get upset because we do, um, supply sand, salt mix behind the old town hall for the residents to come and get a bucket. It is not something we have to do. We do that generosity. It's not our priority to make sure that's full at all times. Uh, I know it did empty out, um, over the weekend yesterday. Uh, we did get some more material put back there today. I can probably guarantee you it's already gone. Just have to ask for patience. We do not allow town residents down the salt shed as there's heavy equipment being run, there's trucks backing in and out and it is too much of a liability for people to be walking around. I've had some very angry residents telling me they're taxpayers and I politely ask them to leave and they don't understand. I will not allow residents to fill their buckets down the salt shed. Also with that, um, there's a lot of social media stuff that goes on. I myself, in the highway department, does not answer to social media.
The town does not do business on social media.
Hasn't happened this year, but last year, someone put on that the road needed to be plowed on social media. Fortunately, we also got a phone call at the same time. And that was due to wind drifts and such. But, uh, if you're looking for an answer, my phone number is publicly posted on the website. If you can't find me, I'm sure one of you can to get in touch with me. I know Jen can. She does quite often.
He's probably very, not happy he shared my, his number with me.
Nope. Public for everyone to call me.
So, what does it cost? Did you already say, I'm sorry if I missed it, what did you say it costs to fill the salt shed?
To fill it? Um, you could, we can probably put about fifteen, fourteen hundred ton of material in there. Still allowing enough room because we park the front-end loader inside. If need be, we can put a truck inside to do something in there. But, um, it's about fourteen hundred ton of material that can go in there.
What does it cost?
I don't have that answer. I had have. Had six, seven loads of salt dumped and that was seven loads is about a hundred and forty ton, no, two hundred and forty ton. And that's about ten grand. So, you do the math.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Anything else on snow and ice?
No, I will say, um, driving to work, taking some backroads through local communities, um, ours were, ours were really good. I know as they drove by my house, I was not happy that they pushed a lot of slush and water back into my driveway, but I'll get over that. But at least it was cleared from the roadway and that's the important piece. So, I do want to thank you and I know the guys were out there working hard and getting that all done and, um, you know, and it's apparent when you start to drive some backroads and other communities that, how well are, even are some of our backroads are compared to some people's main roads, so thank you.
Central Street Project is, um, I'm hoping on the fast-paced move right now. It's advertised in the newspaper finally, uh, started as of yesterday, uh, the Telegram Gazette. As of next week, uh, excuse me, as of thirty-first of January, the bid docs will be available for all contractors. It's listed in the central register. We have timelines and dates, um, which I shared with the board of the chairman here. Deadline submissions of February twenty-fifth, bids due by March first. Construction to start by March twenty-fifth. Completion date of twelve-three, complete. Keep in mind that we're going off estimated construction costs. And as long as everything lines up, uh, they're shooting to start in March.
So, you and I had met, um, one of your, your questions to me was about a contract. And I did send that along with my email to the lawyers last week. There was three, I, there was two labor issues that we had addressed, came back. I'm still waiting on those three other questions and that, the contract is one of those questions. And I know we're, we're well in advance of when we actually need that. But I did start that ball rolling so that you, so we can have that. In compas.
I believe your first meeting in March.
March. We would need that.
We would need to expedite that to stop them work on the twenty-fifth of March.
Right, so they'll.
Weather permitting, but by then, they're going to be able to.
Yeah.
Move forward.
The bids will be open?
The thirty-first of, oh, open.
Like the, the bid award?
Awarded will be.
I don't have my paper in front of me.
Pre-bid meeting on the thirteenth of February, deadline questions is two-twenty. Answer the questions. Two-twenty-five.
Okay.
Is the deadline.
So, right after the bid is awarded to the individual, we, that contract has to be, then, you know, the company name, they have to review it. So, um, that is, that is with legal, I've asked for that, so know that I did that.
And as you know, there was two separate grants for Central Street. One was from Ironstone to Providence. The other was from Providence to Rhode Island Line. Did not think they were gonna come together to go at the same time, but because of, um, paperwork, uh, they're both on schedule to run together, which might help us out contract-wise. Um, they're gonna run, they're putting out the bid all as
That's fantastic.
And we're looking at an eight-month project.
Production time.
Well, the good thing is, we have a lot of side roads to maneuver.
Well, we didn't have a bridge for a long time, we can get by this.
That is, you know, that is gonna be one way we, um, potentially cut, uh, costs is by detouring traffic. Small detours, uh, when they're working in certain sections. Other than that, we'll have our policeman out there telling you where to go.
And, um, comb buys?
Yes.
I sent you a note that the account is up and running.
So now I need to get with you
With the advertisement?
Correct.
From tech to put that up. So you just tell me when. I had to do a lot of finagling and
They tell me they believe there's a form within, once you log in, and it, it, they want the wording of the ad that we put in the newspaper put into combines.
The same.
The same, but in their format.
Okay.
That has to be done by the thirty-first of January.
There was a few accounts that fell under the former town administrator that I needed to ask for a username, then ask for an
New username.
A new user.
A new password.
No, actually, and then ask for a new password, and then I had to go in and create myself, because some of those things were to the person, not to the position. Um, so I had to put myself in, remove the active members from, um, not only that, but the core checks that we do. I had to go in and set up an account, um, revamp that account. So those two accounts have been changed over with myself as the, the person. Um, and then when the new town administrator comes on, they'll have to take over that, because, um, but we, I did get through it all. It took, I mean, not long, but it's more of a headache, but, um, it's all set, so whenever you need it, just tell me, and I'll make sure I'm here to do that. All right, well, I'm glad that Central Street is on.
Uh, National Grid, uh, also, that'll be actually starting sooner than later. Uh, all their paperwork was finally, uh,
Oh, did they?
Signed, notarized, and came back to us, because they needed, if there's two or three people listed on the property, everyone had to be notarized. Our town clerk, as great as she is, she actually ran to people's houses, because they couldn't make it here in a time, or couldn't come out of their house. She jumped in her car and went there with all her stuff, got
Being a notary, being a notary. To do all that.
To take care of it for me, for the, the town. So I wanna thank her for that, and it's been a effort of many people
Takes a village.
To get to this far, and to me, I'm, I, I'm the type of person who just wants to go out and hit the pavement, go to work. This is
They've done a good job keeping this on track.
Yes.
And you have also, I know, I see the emails go back and forth, and I'm like, I have no idea if I'm, I, I can't even respond, because I don't know. I mean, poll, poll relocations was like seven emails deep, and who's doing what, and, you know, Mike DeCecho, I see him on the thread, so I know he's keeping an eye out of the town, so, um, I thank you, because they can, and I'm sure Chrissy probably, you know, keeping everything, um, on track, so it's important. It's a million-dollar infrastructure, um, project that I don't
More than a million.
More than, more than a million now, um, uh, that this town would've never seen that improve, um, to the magnitude and the level that it's going to. Would it have been repaved and patched and fixed and whatever, like it's been for the last, how many years, but
Big thing is, you know, we're gonna have sidewalk from center of town all the way, you, you, virtually, you're gonna go all the way up to
Apparently, the bridge.
You, you're gonna go, that sidewalk goes all the way to Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, there's a small gap.
Small gap, in Rhode Island, not, 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 no, once we're done.
There's a small gap, but that's okay. Yeah, no, it's gonna be great. Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Brian?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I have nothing else. Unless anyone else has something? Well, good. All right, I thank you all. Um, just a reminder, all, um, items to be on the agenda need to be in the Wednesday prior to the meeting, now that we're back on schedule with the holidays, so if there's something you want me to put on, you need to let me know by Wednesday afternoon. And that being said, our next regular meeting will be the day after the Patriots win the Super Bowl, hopefully, on Monday, February fourth, um, at seven PM, unless otherwise noted for executive session. Your motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Someone over there said aye. It's habit, isn't it? We are adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.